All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone here that's here at our chambers and everyone that's out there in TV land. We appreciate you being here and watching. We're gonna start off. Jesse Cardon is gonna give us an invocation. Appreciate that.
Our Father and Him, we are grateful for this opportunity that we have to gather together to discuss the needs of the Spanish Fork area. We are thankful, Father, for this country, for these men and women sacrificing their time to help lead this city. We ask you to bless us with direction this night, and we say it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Jess. I've asked Councilmember Beck to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to public comments. Anyone that'd like to come and address the mayor and the council? You're sure welcome to come up and talk now. Come on up, state your name.
I'm Clay Creer, and I am representing Republic Services, and we do your trash and recycle for Spanish Fork City. And it's just come to our attention through our management that you guys are looking up to maybe rebid or do the trash and recycle on your own. And I just wanna just let you know a little bit about our company and what we do and hopefully maybe reconsider and extend our contract. I wanna start back with a story. Back when I was in high school, I'm from Spanish Fork, and we have probably six or eight guys that work for Republic Services that live and reside in Spanish Fork. But when I was in high school, I worked for Spanish Fork City in the summers. I worked for the streets department, the cemetery, and we actually picked up some of the trash on Friday. I remember we did it by hand, it was a lot of work. But there was a time when one of the drivers for Spanish Fork City had an accident and ran over a young child, and the young child didn't make it. And it was kinda sad, and it really hurt that guy. He was a neighbor of mine, and anyway, my dad was on the city council at the time, sitting where you guys are sitting, and he told me about how nice it was to get the trash away from Spanish Fork City and have a private company do it, just for the peace of mind not having to worry about some of those things, some of those accidents and trainings so forth. So I wanted to maybe just give you a quick history about Republic Services, what we do.
About three minutes.
Okay. So we show up to work, we have three lines of business. We have the residential, which we do Spanish Fork City. We also have the front load, and we have the roll-off. But we get up early in the morning, we have our weekly safety meetings, we have our gear, that's why I wore this tonight, I know it made me look like a little bit of Halloween, but we have our safety gear, we have our weekly training meetings. We're professional, we have a lot of, there's a lot of work going into what a driver does. There's a lot of backing up that's really not, just like any driver you're talking about. So there's a lot to it. We hope that you would consider us people that are residents of Spanish Fork City that are working here and that we can, you'd consider extending our contract just to finalize. It is a peace of mind. I know it might not be the cheapest, but we do a great service. We'll pick up your garbage, a lot of times people will have their trash and we'll go get it for them, we'll bring it out, we'll clean it up. My dad was even telling me about a time, a lot of times when he'd forget to take it out and people, we'd come get it and pick it up. So hopefully you would consider all those things as you're making up your mind and for us who live and reside in Spanish Fork and for the liability issues that you might not fully understand and be aware of while you're making your decisions.
Great, thanks, Clay. Appreciate that. Anyone else who'd like to come up and address the council, the mayor? Come on up. State your name, you have three minutes.
All right. Hello, my name is Mark Denny, 823 West, 450 South. I just have a suggestion. I did send the suggestion on the website to the city council, but I never got a response from anybody from the city. But anyway, it has to do with, just actually has to do with trash bins. The city that I used to live at had a city code or city ordinance where after your trash was emptied, the homeowners were to put their trash bins off the street behind a fence, like on the side yard behind a fence. So this would, you know, add to the tractiness of the streets where the trash bins weren't sitting out, out on the street all week long. Now, most people put them away, right? But the city where I came from had you take them off, put them behind a gate, out of sight of the front yard. So just a suggestion that you may wanna consider on a future agenda is homeowners are to remove their trash bins and put them behind a fence after they get emptied. So I hope you consider that, just a little thing that would make our city a little nicer to, a little nicer to, you know, appearance-wise. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you for that. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Yeah.
As long as it's something different from what Clay said.
Oh, really?
That's public comments. If you're saying the same thing over, we got the message. We just, as long as you gave me something different, you're welcome to talk. That's how that works with the public comments.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. We understand where you're coming from, and we appreciate that. All right, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Connie Manwaring. I live in Spanish Fork, and I'm the manager and president of Nebo Holiday Chorus and Orchestra. And I'm here to just thank the city of Spanish Fork for their wonderful support. We started this organization last year and with nothing, really. And we came to the city with this wonderful idea, and I want to especially thank Seth, where did he go? Oh, over there, for hearing me out and supporting us. We had a wonderful turnout last year. In both concerts, we had a full audience, we had a hundred-voice choir, and we had twenty-five people in the orchestra. And ninety percent of those performers came from Spanish Fork. That just, I wanted to tell you that because I wanted to show you how much talent we have in the city. And we would like to continue this tradition, and so we're very grateful that Spanish Fork granted us the money again this year, and we hope that we can continue this relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? And we'd like to welcome all the scouts that showed up here, that filled up our chamber. I hope you can last. So, appreciate you being here. Okay, if there's none other public comments, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Beck.
I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, geez, write that down. Okay, Councilman Scholes.
Mayor, we had a couple of meetings in between our last meeting. We had Veterans Council meeting this last Wednesday, they talked about, went over their financials and different issues, particular to the Veterans Council. Veterans Day is coming up, November 11th, and the different veterans organizations, the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, both participate quite a bit in our community, going to the local schools and different areas in the community to be able to help teach the younger generations and help them understand what Veterans Day is and what it means to be a veteran. So appreciate all that they do for our community and all that we will see them do here in the next, in the next three, four weeks. Also had the Utah Lake Commission, some things of note, there was quite a bit of business. Things of note were the Cedar Hills and Mapleton City, they were extended offers or invitations to participate in the Utah Lake Commission, and they accepted, so they are now, they are now part of that. And then another of note, in the fall, the Utah Lake Commission, they have field trips. Fourth grade students come from all over Utah County. The reason why it's fourth grade, fourth grade is the watershed, water table, water cycle is all part of fourth grade core, and so that's a free field trip that they're able to participate in or participate with. This last year, they had 600 students attended over two days with the help of different local and other agency volunteers they had. So the Utah Lake Commission's doing a great thing, they're keeping track of phragmities, which is an invasive weed that's growing around the lake, working hard to keep that down, as well as other issues that either detract or damage the environment in and around the lake. So just to report on that, other than that, I don't have anything, Mayor.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we had an active and healthy board meeting that was a neat meeting. We've had a couple of active and healthy, Spanish Fork active and healthy meetings since we last met as a council, but today's was a pretty neat time, held up at the golf course at the clubhouse up there. This active and healthy meeting was involved mayor, the council, our chief of police, the chief from Springville as well, and the county sheriff's office, right Dale? Along with the speaker that facilitated this meeting today was a representative from Intermountain Healthcare, who's building the new hospital in town. The reason they wanted to have this meeting with a bunch of stakeholders, some local doctors, the mayor's nephew, actually, is a doctor, and he was there. The reason they wanna have this meeting is they wanna get a vibe from the, a feeling from the community of how they can make sure when they build that awesome facility down there, that they're building it focused on our needs here in South Utah County. And so I thought it was a very forward-thinking meeting that the active and healthy group was able to be a part of and construct and put together and discuss the issues that are not only general in our health, but the issues that are germane to right here where we live. So I'm really excited to see the results that come from that. Remember, that's a 200, I think it was 230 million dollar facility is what that hospital will end up being. And today, we had some input to those people of what kind of hospital it will be. And so it was really neat to be a part of that from the active and healthy movement. They did respond that, out of all the meetings they've ever done where they're building hospitals in communities, this was one of the most well-attended and well-diversified groups that they've been a part of. So they really appreciated the attendance of everyone, and they appreciated the feedback that they got and promised to take it into their plans. The other meeting I attended was yesterday, but in Salt Lake, at the Utah League of Cities and Towns Board Meeting. After that board meeting was the Legislative Policy Committee Meeting. And I know residents don't always understand what that means. The Utah League of Cities and Towns is an organization that we belong to, along with the other 248 cities and towns across the state, and we just share best practices of what cities are doing that works, what cities could maybe do better, and then also lobby up at the state legislature for the issues that we're all hearing about in the news. Some of those things that were discussed, just to go over them at a high level, was the housing affordability issue. We've all heard of a housing gap that we're discussing here in Utah, firefighter retirement and Tier Two retirement for public safety officers, water updates, the laws on water and what cities can do with water are constantly changing, the towing rotations, so how many times a city can contract with a specific towing company in their city, local option sales tax distribution, and medical marijuana that you've all heard in the news, which could definitely affect how your local communities shape up. Just one other point that we learned from that meeting that I wanted to pass on was we commissioned a study with a company called Y2 Analytics that did an in-depth study of what people think of local government. And when it comes, they did it specific to the housing issue, that the state has a housing crisis where they're trying to find enough affordable housing for all of us to live in and do that in a way that keeps the character of all of our communities. A couple of points that they shared from their study was, number one, that people trust local government the most to make decisions when it comes to housing in their community. So their survey surveyed thousands of people, and those people responded overwhelmingly in the like 60% range that the people they trust the most is their local cities and towns and the government officials there, not the county, not the governor's office, not developers, a whole host of other folks. Right after that, the next slide showed that, who do you blame when, for a housing crisis, for a crisis of price or affordable housing in a community? Guess who they blame, Mayor?
Us.
Local government. Local government as well. So where your trust resides, what we found out from that study is where your trust resides to fix problems is also where some of the frustration is. And so what we're looking to do for all the cities in the state, including Spanish Fork, is make sure we have clear and concise communication efforts to help educate us all, the public in our communities, of how we can help these specific problems, one with the housing affordability, of course, but other specific problems. So excited for the year coming ahead with the League of Cities and Towns and be prepared for the session coming up. Our mantra is that the government closest to the people governs best, and that's what we try to do every day as we talk to you, our neighbors and friends and families. So that's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't see Heather Yowd from the chamber here, so I'll mention a few things that we've got going on through the chamber. The farmer's market continues to go on, we've only got a couple more weeks, and fruits and vegetables are slowly changing, but there's still plenty of good stuff, so continue to support them if you would. The trick-or-treating on Main Street is also the last Saturday of the month, the last Saturday that'll be the last Saturday of the farmer's market. Trick-or-treating on Main from here in Center Street and all the way down to Fourth North from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon on that Saturday. Tomorrow, we have a new networking lunch for the business community. I don't know who our guest speaker is, but I think that will be down at the police station, if I recall.
I think it's at the Nebo School District.
You're right. It is, thank you. It's at the Nebo School District, and they'll be talking about the bond, correct?
Right.
Thanks, Stacy. She's always got my back. There's a few things that you can go on the chamber's website for that, one, the scarecrow is down Main Street. If you wanna go on the chamber's website and vote for your favorite scarecrow, that would be helpful, and they'll be giving that out. And the other thing I was gonna point out is if you go on their website, you could fill out an entry and submit for a entry into the light parade. It's a fun family tradition of ours. After Thanksgiving, you go, all down Main Street starts at Cal Ranch and comes down and ends down here at the park. And a couple of years ago, we started the new tradition of lighting the tree here at the city offices. So that'll be going on. It starts at 7:00, again, from 9th North down here to 1st South and around the library park, and then the mayor will flip the switch on the tree after, and hopefully the weather is as good as last year was, 'cause it was glorious. And then I just wanted to address Clay's comments, just really quickly as the rep for the garbage, and just appreciate you coming. I wanna just say first and foremost that we don't have any issues with Republic. They give wonderful service. We just re-upped the contract the last time, we didn't bid it out, so we just extended it. So I've expressed to Reese that as a council, we wanna see all options, and we don't know why a Provo or a Springville hauls their own garbage. It doesn't make sense to us, but we wanna just see those numbers. And so maybe Reese relayed back to you that, you know, we were just gonna do it. That's not true. We wanna compare numbers as elected officials. So I just wanted to address you and let you know, we really appreciated you coming out, and we do hear you, and if we need more, we'll reach out to you as well for a resource. So we really appreciate you being here. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment, had a board meeting at the seniors, and first of all, they just wanna thank Seth and the staff, come down and took time to explain the RAP tax and answer some questions, and they were grateful for that time that they come and did that. Also, the membership is growing, and they just wanna remind each, First Friday of each month is their membership meal, and their membership is growing more. It seems like each year it gets a little more. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move into consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, RAP tax, public comment. Scott?
Tyler, let him out.
I think that means Tyler wants to come up here and do this, right? No. Well, first and foremost, I wanna thank everyone that we have here tonight in the city offices. It's great to see such an awesome turnout, and I'm sure you're all here for the RAP tax, even all the Cub Scouts. Second, also to those of you at home watching on SF-17, on our YouTube channel, as well as on Facebook Live, this is our first Facebook Live of a portion of a city council meeting, so we're excited to do that for this portion of the meeting. So we'll dive right in. Residents may have noticed within the last week, received this pamphlet in the mail, this voter information pamphlet gives a lot of really good information about the RAP tax, so that residents can get informed and learn about what impacts, you know, a potential RAP tax would have on them as a resident, as well as the city of Spanish Fork. So tonight, we'll get into some of these details, and what we'll really focus on tonight in our public meeting is, you know, obviously, what is a RAP tax? How are the funds distributed? What projects could be funded? And then we'll go over a couple of examples that we've seen in other communities that have a similar tax. So what is a RAP tax? Well, a RAP tax is a sales tax. So what it does is it increases the sales tax, and we'll go over the rates in a little bit. But the funds that are generated by a RAP tax are unique because they can only be spent and used on specific purposes that are related to recreation arts and parks. They can't be used on anything else, they don't go to pay for city staff or anything like that, it's just for recreation arts and parks. Residents may be familiar with this concept because other communities have them. Orem has the care tax, Salt Lake County has the ZAP tax, Provo has a RAP tax. So they go by a lot of different names, but they serve the same purpose. Now, the RAP tax doesn't last forever. That's one question that we've heard is, well, does this last forever? RAP taxes last for 10 years, and so at the end of the 10 years, if the city and the residents are interested in continuing having this revenue stream, the city can put it back on the ballot and send it out to the residents to vote again. Typically, cities that do this see a higher approval rating the second go-around than the first go-around, which goes to show some of the benefits that communities have seen by having a RAP tax. So how much is the RAP tax? Let's get down to kind of the brass tacks, right? What's it gonna cost me? Well, the RAP tax, the rate is .1%, so .1%, and this equals, if you were to go to Walmart and spend $10, you would pay one penny in RAP tax. And the Utah State Tax Commission estimates that for Spanish Fork City in 2017, this would have generated about $490,000, and in 2018, $568,000. This is evident based off of the number of businesses, new businesses that we're having within the city, business growth, as well as people that come here to shop that may not live here in the city. So another question that we get is, well, why use a RAP tax? Why use a sales tax to expand recreation arts and parks within a community? Well, for example, if a property tax revenue stream were used, well, let's say using that same $10, spent one penny generated in a RAP tax scenario, for every penny that a resident pays in property tax, well, that penny is one penny, and that goes into the general fund to pay for city programs. But with a RAP sales tax, residents are still paying that one penny, and that one penny goes into recreation arts and parks. But non-residents who come and shop in Spanish Fork, they will also pay that one penny on $10. And again, that goes towards paying for recreation arts and parks. Now, this one penny for residents and one penny for non-residents is calculated because the state tax commission, again, their data indicates that between 41 and 52% of all sales in Spanish Fork occur from individuals that don't live here. They come here to shop at our businesses, eat at our restaurants. And so, again, for every penny that our residents are putting into the RAP tax fund, one penny would also be put in from non-residents. So how are the funds distributed? Does the rec department decide where they go? Does the city manager? No, city staff does not determine how the funds are distributed. In fact, it's the residents and the city council that get to decide that. A citizen advisory committee would be created if the RAP tax were approved on the ballot. And this advisory committee would review applications from not only the city parks department and any cultural arts projects from the city, but any other appropriate 501(c)(3) organizations within the community. And we really wanna emphasize that the city has to go through the same process as anybody else. There's no green light path for the city to get these funds, they go through the same process as everyone else. So this committee, they would review these applications, and they would make a recommendation to the city council for annual distributions for that year. City council would review the recommendations and then make the final call. So what projects could be funded? Well, here's the ballot language that you'll see as your ballots are delivered this week, and I won't read this verbatim, you'll find it in your ballot, but the ballot lists categories that would be eligible for RAP tax funds. This top section up here looks at different program types, especially within the arts sector, and then down here, different capital improvement projects that could be eligible, for example, parks, courts and fields, bike paths, trails, splash pads, swimming pools, and performing arts centers. So let's translate that into actual project types. Well, in preparation for putting this on the ballot, we spoke with you, the city council, and asked, what are some projects you would be interested in if the RAP tax were to pass? What would you like to see within the city? And a lot of the projects that you indicated are projects that we have heard as staff from residents, is they come in and say, hey, why doesn't Spanish Fork have this? Or could we get this? Some of these projects that we'd like to really highlight tonight are the All Abilities Park, which is a park for children of all abilities. Improved arts programs within the community, community theater, as well as other children's arts programs. This would also include library programs. Trail connections, expanding trail connections within the city, expanding improvements and programs at our senior center and other amenities throughout the city. So what have some other cities done? Well, in Orem, they call theirs the Care Tax, and some of the projects that they've done, again, is this All Abilities Park that they call the Altogether Playground, which, again, is to help facilitate the activity and recreation of children of all abilities, whether they're in wheelchairs or may have other disabilities. St. George has a similar park, they call it Thunder Junction, and again, it's one of these All Abilities Parks. Orem has also done a new splash pad at Palisade Park, and they've been able to fund different programs, as well as improvements for the very popular Sierra Park Theater. American Fork has a pretty recent RAP tax that they've passed, they call it the Park, and here you can see that the library has been able to fund additional programs. There have been other parks and rec programs that have been facilitated, as well as community theater here. They've got Beauty and the Beast back in 2017. So we, again, thank all of the residents that have come here tonight to learn more about the RAP tax, and we encourage you to get informed as you prepare to vote this November. We have a website at SpanishFork.org/RAPtax where you can learn more. You can submit a question, and we'll respond to your question, and we thank residents who have been thoughtful and provided very thought-provoking questions the last few months as we've gone through this process. So at this time, we will have, we've received pro and con statements that were included in the voter information. statements that were included in the voter information pamphlet. We actually received a, a pro statement from the city council. We did not receive any con statements for that. So I'll turn the time now over to our city council to read the pro statement. And then after which, I'll give it back to the council to go through public comment. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Proposition seven, RAP tax. Pro statement. Recreation arts and parks are core components of Spanish Fork's identity, whether it be the River Trail, the Sports Park, the Harvest Moon Hurrah, or variety of recreation programs. We take pride in our recreation arts and parks. They improve the quality of life of our residents, beautify our wonderful community, and provide opportunities for families, residents to interact and to recreate.
Historically, Spanish Fork City has provided great programs and amenities for our residents. However, as our community continues to grow, so do the needs of our residents. Furthermore, residents regularly request new or expanded programs and amenities from the city. To further expand what is currently available for our residents, the city council has unanimously approved placing Proposition seven on the ballot, which would enact a recreation arts and parks or RAP tax in Spanish Fork City.
The RAP tax is a sales tax, not a property tax, and would be paid at the point of purchase for all sales tax eligible purchases in Spanish Fork City. The RAP tax would be a nominal increase of 0.1% to the sales tax rate, increasing the rate from 6.75% to 6.85%. This equates to one penny for every $10 spent. All funds generated by the Recreation Arts and Parks tax could only be used to either expand or supplement RAP offerings in Spanish Fork City.
Because it's a sales tax, Spanish Fork residents will not be the only ones who pay the RAP tax. Anyone who shops in Spanish Fork City will be required to pay the tax. This is very important, especially considering how Spanish Fork is the retail hub in southern, southern Utah County. Data from the Utah State Tax Commission suggests that between 41 and 52% of all sales in Spanish Fork City come from individuals who do not live here. And this percentage increases every year. This means that for every 50 cents you pay in RAP tax, you receive $1 in benefit.
Furthermore, RAP tax are not new to state or county. In fact, if you shop in Provo, Orem, Payson, American Fork, Salt Lake County, or Washington County, and St. George, you're paying the RAP tax and helping fund recreation arts and parks in these communities.
The RAP tax will enable the city to do more with what has been done in the past. As a council, we have a number of projects that could be funded by the RAP tax, including, but not limited to, All Abilities Park, Dog Park amenities, Trail Connections, enhanced art programs like the Community Theater and children's programs, amphitheater and senior center improvements.
We unanimously support Proposition seven. We take pride in our recreation arts and parks and are confident that the RAP tax will progress RAP offerings in Spanish Fork, ultimately making Spanish Fork City an even better place to live. Vote yes for Proposition seven, Mayor and Spanish Fork City Council. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open this up to, uh, public comments. Oh, do we need you to come up, Kent? Nope. Since there was no opposition to it, we don't. So I'm gonna go into, uh, public comments. Just a word about our public comments. Anyone that wants to, to come up and talk for or against it, you get three minutes. And please don't repeat what someone else has said. So if you've got something different to say, please come up and tell us. And we'll, we'll proceed to that. So I'd entertain a motion to go into, uh...
No. It's not a motion. It's just an open.
Oh, just open it. That's right. We're just gonna open it for public comments. Thanks, Kent. Someone needs to keep me in line. I thank you. All right. So whoever'd like to come up and talk about either for or against it, please welcome. And I'll be pretty strict about the three minute rule. Thank you.
Mark Denny, 823 West, 450 South. I think these projects are great, recreation, parks, and arts. And I think we already have a pretty robust program in the city with these things. So I, I don't think that it's necessary to have another tax. If it was a public safety issue, that could be different, different. I think we need to make do with what we have. And I think we already have a really good overall system. So I would urge to vote no on the RAP tax. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. My name is Nate Muswell. I live at 1208 South, 2970 East. I am not coming up here for or against the tax, but I do wanna point out that I, I found out recently that the, the time to submit rebuttal for a no vote was very short. It sounds like you all, you all had a lot of time to come up with your statements, and that's really good. But it was posted on the website and on Facebook on August 30th with a September 4th due date to have a, a no rebuttal. And I wanna say, I don't think that was enough time. So I would encourage you in the future, please to give more notice. Thank you.
You.
My name's Jared Mitchell. 740 North, 100 East. So my only concern would be that some of the projects that might get approved in the future, like an indoor aquatic center or like facilities or something like that, might ultimately need to have property tax increases if the ongoing funding becomes too much. So that would just be my concern. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Bjorn Pendleton. I served as president of the Arts Council for 10 years. And I appreciate you giving the Harvest Moon Hurrah shout out in your statement, because that's been my baby for 14 years. To me, the RAP tax is a no-brainer. Why would you not want other people to give you money? People that don't live in this community. And the fact that, that 50% of that money is gonna come from non-residents, why would you turn down that money? That's just a no-brainer, in my opinion. And people see pennies on the ground all the time and never pick them up. Why would there be a complaint when you're spending one penny in, in every $10 to go, go towards making your community a better place, towards improving the quality of life in this community? And so again, I say, it, it's a no-brainer. And I'm willing to, to pay that extra penny per $10 to make this community that I love a better place, better for my generation, better for the next generation, and improve, improve it in so many ways. And I love the arts. And my kids are all involved in, in all the, all the sports and recreation programs. And so if for no one else, I, I would do it for my kids. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mayor and council members, my name is Doug Ford. I'm a citizen and also a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. First of all, Mayor, I apologize for not wearing my coat and tie.
Yeah.
I was in a little bit of a hurry when I got home. I couldn't find my tie. I'll make sure next time that I...
And you got that on record, that he said next time. So yeah, I got that.
Well, great. Anyway, I, as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, we've had several discussions over the last several months about this tax. And we all are very much in favor of this. I think there's one thing that maybe was not brought up in the presentation that's pretty important. And that is, when we shop at a different city that has the RAP tax for their city, we're paying for their recreation programs too, or helping pay. So what's brought up as far as the other different communities coming into our city, you know, that's how that would work. So we're already helping the other cities that have a RAP tax that we may shop. From, from me personally, I always, I mean, the way this city runs and has the recreation programs, the facilities, I mean, it is awesome. And first class, just the other night with the pickleball court opening, I mean, that's first class. When the city does something, it is first class. And I, I think that's, you know, if, if we can do anything to keep youth into recreation, I think that's going to help with all of the things that's going around us or happening in this world around us, in happening in this city around us. I think anytime that we can promote and help recreation to the youth and even adults, I think we're gonna be way further ahead. So me personally, and on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Committee, we totally support the implementation of the RAP tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug's comments are perfect for me to piggyback on. My name's Susan Chapman. And if you know who I am, you're probably familiar with a lot of the things that, that I've done and tried to do personally with the city. I've been kind of a bully. I'm really passionate about public health. And there was a comment about whether this was a, if this was a public safety issue, this would be different. And to me, it's one and the same. I'm very passionate about suicide prevention. I'm very passionate about extending the lives of the community around us. As you know, because I've preached it a lot, is that our leading cause of death of youth right now, ages 10 to 17, is suicide. And what does this have to do with the RAP tax? Let me back up a little bit. Right now, we're offering classes, suicide prevention classes, gatekeeper training that we're doing in the community. And so I mingle a lot with, with those who have suffered loss, loss from suicide. And I've contemplated a lot, what do we do with this problem? How do we do it? How do we work online, upstream with this problem before it becomes a problem? And in my research, and my education is in this, I really focus on evidence-based programs, what has worked in the past in other communities, what is it? And social development strategy. And I'm gonna repeat that, social development strategy. A lot of people have wondered what this RAP tax is going to do for our community. Social development strategy is where it's at. This is very proven. It's scientifically based. It's when a community comes in, they provide opportunities, they provide skills, they provide recognition for youth. That is proven 20 years down the line. It increases academic performance for our children in their future, lowers substance abuse, lowers violence, lowers suicidal ideation. It, it, it really is a way that the community can provide a whole, a whole line of, of, well, it can provide a lot of, a lot, it can, it could prevent a lot of problems in society. So if you're wondering if the RAP tax will make a difference in our community in the future, it surely can. I have five boys. Only one of them is interested in sports. The other three are interested in the arts, even, and we've tried everything to get them interested in sports. But so you're missing a whole group of kids if we only focus on, on sports, right? And these programs funded under the RAP tax will also help a lot of kids that will miss out on these programs otherwise. So I am all for this. We have a lot of non-residents coming into our, into our great city. And they're, they're shopping at our great businesses. They're causing a lot of traffic. I look at this as a way, if I were a business and I could see the benefits of this, I would think, wow, this is great. Look at what I can do for my community. Look at how I can give back. I can give back in great ways. So I would be proud if I was a business owner to give back into my community into this way. And that's just my two cents. So thanks.
Right on the three minute mark. Proud of you. Whoa, look at that. See, I told you it was right. No, that doesn't count. No, that doesn't count.
He has to buy donuts.
No, 'cause that was the regular.
Yep. Let the record show.
No, and don't talk to Doug about it either.
Further discussion, Doug.
Yeah, under further review. All right. Anyone else?
I don't know if I can even get my name and address out in three minutes. So I'll give it my best try. I'm John Mendenhall, lifelong resident of the area of Spanish Fork. And first of all, I'd like to thank Spanish Fork City for taking care of our finances and our money. As a young man, I wasn't interested in the arts very much. I pretty much just participated in sports. And Spanish Fork has been known as the leader of sports in our community for a long, long time. I was grateful for that all the time. In the recent past, I have been drug sometimes screaming and hollering into the arts part of, of, of life in Spanish Fork and in other areas. And one of the things that I'm extremely impressed with of Spanish Fork is, anytime that there's a major thing that happens, Spanish Fork asks for the input of the citizens. And there have been a few things that haven't gone so well, that were voted down because the residents decided that they didn't want them. One of the things that impressed me in the presentation tonight is that the, the monies that are received from the RAP tax will not be completely decided by staff and by the mayor. It will be, it will come from a committee that is formed from the residents of Spanish Fork City. And that's extremely important to me, that there'll be a lot of people that will have input into what these funds are used for. It's restricted to those things. And I think that's a great way to do it. And I support the tax for that reason. I think it's a great opportunity for us to continue to stay on top of the arts, the parks, and the recreation. As a matter of fact, I've talked to a lot of people who have moved into Spanish Fork over the years. And one of their reasons for wanting to be a citizen of Spanish Fork is the opportunities that are here. And not just sports, but other things that Spanish Fork has, and that we fund, and we take great pride in. And I think that that is a, a great program. And that I would second the notion that it's a great opportunity for our, our children and our youth to be involved in something. Because if you're not involved in something, you'll find somewhere to be that you probably shouldn't be. So thank you to the mayor and city council.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Chief Adam's still here?
Well, I'm up here because the mayor gave me the finger to come up. This finger. My name's Dave Boyack. I live on the east end of town. I'm not sure what my address is, because my wife builds a new house about every three years. So where I live, when I go to work, I drive past a, a park, Sierra Park, it'll be that same of it. And it's full of kids on a nightly basis. And it just, it does my heart good to see that. I, I often wonder where those kids went before that park was built, which makes me think we probably need to build more. If those kids are not in parks recreating and playing, they're home on their, their devices, wasting time, in my opinion. This is a good, this is a good place for these kids to be. And so as has been mentioned before, to me, this is a no-brainer. That number goes up every year, about, it looks like about $80,000. And with new businesses coming in, there's just a lot of good things that I think could be done with this. My, my love is recreation and sports. But to see kids outside recreating and participating is, is one of the best things we can be doing and having kids participate in. So I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
My name's Karen Bradford, and I live at 363 North, 450 West. I also work for the city in Parks and Recreation. And one of the divisions that I deal with in a supervisory manner is the Arts Council. And over the last about 10 years or so since, the Arts Council came under the umbrella of the city, and it's probably been longer, anyway, about that maybe. I have gotten to know so many of these good people that are invested in the arts, for no other reason than to bring joy to the commi, to the community. Whether it's through youth theater, or the adult cultural arts classes that we try to do in January and February, the Youth Arts Festival that they do the first two weeks of June, which last year had about 1,200 kids participating, the Harvest Moon Hurrah, as has been mentioned, our corral group. And they, they are... The Harvest Moon Hurrah, as has been mentioned, our corral group, and they, they are, most of, all of these divisions, except for the teachers that we pay to teach classes, oh, and youth theater, oh my heavens, I can't forget youth theater. But all of the directors, except for the teachers that we pay to teach in these programs, are volunteers. And I have watched, and I maybe didn't mention Community Theater too, either. I'm going to be in trouble if I leave somebody out. But I watched these volunteer people look at their budgets that they have, and many of them are self-sustaining budgets, meaning that what they bring in is what they can spend. And not every year, we can't do a Disney film in Community Theater, because everybody wants to, you know, try their hand at a drama, or a, or, or some other genre. But we know Disney is what brings in the money, and so, they, they try to, they have to look at things from that standpoint, rather than, than how they will grow as a part of the Community Theater. And I would love it if we had this money that was for recreation, arts, and parks, that they could make an application to do a project that they felt like would be a benefit to the community, or that they would love, and be able to have a little bit of help financially, so they didn't always have to worry about balancing. They, and knowing these people, they will still be very fiscally responsible, because that's how they are. But, but they work so hard to try to bring the opportunities to the kids, devote so many hours, and I just, I have a lot of respect for the people that love arts, because they do it, because they know it enhances life. The other point I wanted to mention, and I appreciated five minutes, I haven't been going five minutes.
Got 10 seconds. But go ahead.
All right, I'll say this.
You get extra.
Oh, thanks, I'll say this really fast. I appreciated the point of the gentleman when he says that we do have nice facilities, and we do have good recreation. And I, I appreciate the support of the city council, and them realizing how that does enhance life in Spanish Fork. But I also know that our community is growing, and as part of the city and the budgeting process and hearing what's going on, I know we're going to expand, we've already expanded fire and ambulance to daytime shifts. I know that won't be that long before we are going to go full 24/7 shifts. We're, we're looking to build a new fire station. These are a library we need. These are things our community needs as we grow, and need to keep updated, and as these essential services, then sometimes what can get pushed aside are the things that just enhance our life in the community, because we do need essential services. So I just, I know you guys are good planners, and I appreciate what you've done, but I think that's a good thing to keep in mind too. Thanks.
Thanks.
Karen. Does anyone else have goosebumps, because it's so darn cold in here?
Oh geez.
I'm just saying, I'm freezing.
You can have my coat.
You're freezing, Angie? Thank you. I have my coat on my lap. If you could get me a minky blanket out of the closet in the back room?
I have one in my car, do you want me to go grab it?
Yes, after your comment, then you can run out.
I have a daughter that takes it to, to school with her unless I pay attention.
It's just cold, I'm just saying.
Yes. Hi, I'm Angela Eckhart, I'm with the Arts Council too, and I know you've already heard some things about, first of all, I have to say that we love Karen for putting up with us, because she does an amazing job. And part of what she said is what I wanted to hit on, like, we had Harvest Moon Hurrah, and I'm in charge of the, the children's tent for Harvest Moon Hurrah, and it's one of my favorite things, it's so fun to watch it through, watch kids come through. We had about 700 kids come through and do different projects, and my budget for that this year was $200, which was up about $50 from what I've had before. I love being able to do it, but it takes a lot of figuring out how to do those activities, six different activities for 700 kids with that much money. And I love it, and I know the other people that are there for Harvest Moon Hurrah and all of the other activities, love it, and we do it because we love it, but it would be nice to make an application to get a little bit more funding for some of those things. Part of the reason that we moved to Spanish Fork when I moved here, oh my goodness, 20 years ago, is because there were so many programs for families, such a family-oriented, lots of recreation programs, lots of good things going on, and there still are, but we are growing, and we do need more funding for this, so I hope that, I hope you'll keep that in mind. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right.
I'm Jefferson Hunter. I, I live 1146 East 225 South, just up the hill, and I'm here to represent all the scouts that were and are here. I think it's a good idea, because if you spend $100, it's only 10 more cents, and like, that 10 more cents, like you saw the numbers, they could go towards so many things. We could have way more activities for lots of other things, and everybody could have a chance. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
It's what I like about the youth of our city, you know, very good. Thank you for coming up. Anyone else? If not, then we'll close those public comments and move on. Is there anything council would like to talk about?
I have a quick question, Scott. Will you remind me on food services? Are we charged still, taxed the same?
That's a great question. So, certain food items are either exempt or have a reduced sales tax rate, and so, for those items, the sales tax rate would not change. So, and there's a long list that the state has on what can be taxed if it's food. If you go to a restaurant, it's charged, but if it's just...
Like a grocery store?
Groceries. If you're buying groceries, you typically don't, you pay a reduced sales tax on those groceries, and those would not be impacted.
Okay.
Sorry? Oh, yeah, so, couple of comments that we had that we'll just address as staff. The first, there was one comment about property taxes, and does this then create a liability down the road if, if funds were to be used for some type of facility? While RAP tax funds could be used for a recreation facility, or an indoor pool, or, or something of that nature, we don't see that it would be very likely to do a recreation facility. For example, the Life Center, I believe the, the annual debt service payment was just over $2 million. And so, if we took all nearly $600,000 from the RAP tax and put that towards a recreation facility, it's not even going to come close to the, the annual cost, and that's just the debt service, that's not operations or anything like that. Furthermore, you wouldn't have any money to spend on, on other areas. So while it could be used on a recreation facility, we don't see that being very likely, and so we don't see this being something that would create a property tax liability down the road. The second comment was about public noticing. So we did notice a request for the pro and con statements on the city website, on Facebook, as well as in the city newsletter that's distributed to all utility accounts. The state doesn't require cities to notice for a pro and con statement, but we felt that it was necessary to do so, and, and would be helpful for our residents. And so, we did notice that a few days before, the, the process is residents would just have to say, I'm interested in writing a pro or con statement, and then they have another week after that to actually submit the statement. So, we did give some notice, though not required by state to do so.
Good to know, thanks.
Hey, since this is our first Facebook Live, have there been any questions or, or comments that we might need to respond to there? No, none? Okay, thank you.
How does Brandon look on camera?
Am I okay? Because we can start over. I wrote down everybody's name, and I'm sure that I'll be happy to come back up.
Well, the one thing about Facebook, it makes you look skinnier. So you're okay.
That's not true.
I don't know, the rest of the council probably has some, some comments about this. I have a couple of comments that, that I'd like to make about the RAP tax, about our parks and recreation and our arts programs. I appreciate Karen bringing that up. I appreciate Doug being up here, the mayor, our assignment's switch around as council people, and I've been fortunate enough for the past year or so to sit in with the Parks and Recreation Committee that meets every month. And what a great group of volunteers, just like every other group in this city, the volunteers are just amazing, that they get together and talk about ways to, to enhance the, the citizens, the offerings to our citizens here. And in that vein, may, maybe the first thing I wanted, and people have talked about this, but about what's attractive to Spanish Fork, and I know we could all go really quickly and find something like this, so last night, I just wanted to, the first listing that I found in Spanish Fork, and there's a few, I can't believe somebody didn't want to sell their home and move to somewhere else, right, Mayor? Except you've done that before, you moved away for a little bit. Required work.
Required, not very long.
So I'm su, I'm sure this resident too, had to move for, for work or something, or is looking of it. Here's their listing, just the first, the first couple sentences. Hard-to-find, two-story home located near the Spanish Fork River Trail and Sports Park. Now beyond that, it goes plenty of upgrades and amenities, and, and luxury vinyl planking, et cetera, details about the house. The first item in that listing to sell this home was walking distance to the River Trail and the Sports Park. Why I want to bring that up is sometimes when we're talking about a tax, especially at local government, it gets into a discussion of wants versus needs. And, and so, which I think taxes should always be debated, you should have a robust debate, and see, see if it's the best thing for a community. But I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at in a long way, Mayor, is I think the debate needs to move. The, the debate needs to move. When it comes to parks, arts, and recreation, it is a need. It is certainly a need. It's a need for so many things in our community. What I just read you was a, a need for that person's house value. That person feels like that's an amenity that is probably a reason why they moved to Spanish Fork, and is probably a reason why they think someone's going to want to, to move to Spanish Fork. Now, because I say that's a need, parks, arts, and recreation is a need, does not mean that we are, that it's one or the other. That doesn't mean that we're sacrificing public safety. That doesn't mean we're sacrificing roads, garbage, sewer, all the, all the necessities that we need to function as a community are not being sacrificed for parks, arts, and recreation. But, in my opinion, they do need to, we need to have the discussion and the debate from, it certainly is a, a standpoint of need. If you'll indulge me, a personal story, I've told this to a few people, I don't think I've said it here, you can stop me if I have, but it's like so many others in our community, we have volunteered to coach, whether baseball, basketball, soccer, anything, right? We've, we've all taken our turn and, and taken the, the one for the team, if you will, and coached. A couple of years ago, I coached my son in the, on the Dodgers. We were kind of a rough team, and then we came together right at the right time, won some games, and ended up winning the state tournament. It was the greatest thing ever. Bunch of eight-year-olds jumping up and down and yelling, and the dads were yelling louder than the eight-year-olds, because that's how it goes, right? We were just excited, we were on top of the world. It was so fun, and it made a difference in those eight-year-olds' lives. Next year, or, excuse, yeah, the next year, we move up a league and we're, we're the Twins. Last year, the Twins were kind of rough, Mayor, and it wasn't the coach's fault, it was something else.
And that's debatable.
We, we barely won half of our games, we struggled, we, you know, sometimes it didn't seem the kids were having fun, sometimes it didn't work. And, and so, we get to the end of the, the season, and I'm a little down, thinking, gosh, this wasn't the best experience, it wasn't the best experience for me, wasn't the best experience for these, you know, now 10-year-olds, I don't, I don't think this was very successful. Walking into, to the last game, jeez. A mom stops me in the parking lot and, and says, hey. Tears in her eyes, like, like mine, and says, hey, I want you to know how much this meant to my kid. The last couple of months have, have been, have been awesome for him. And I'm thinking, I'm like, are we seeing two different teams? It didn't seem very awesome at times. The growth of that young boy that I learned after, didn't have the best home life, didn't have the best opportunities, it meant everything to him. It meant everything to him for a few months, that he got to, to not only play baseball, but improve his social, his physical, and, and his mental health. And so, it was a, a wake-up call to me of, of what parks and recreation can be. In the same vein, I appreciated what Susan said of, of it's not all about recreation. We're big into recreation in this city, and it's a good thing. It's, it's blessed a lot of people's lives, adults and children. I've got a brother who, we all, my sister and, and my two brothers, we all played sports growing up. My older brother went into something different, went into something different, went into the arts, went into music, and went into everything that, that is music. And I, I don't think, I think there's more offerings now than there were then, when my brother was, was growing up. His, I remember one of his earliest performances, if you will, was joining my grandpa at the Senior Citizen Center and playing an organ for the people to enjoy music. And, and that opportunity, and I look, you know, I played baseball and, and basketball, and fortunately, just barely, I didn't make it into the pros, Mayor, I did not make it.
I feel your pain.
I had to settle on, on, on becoming a banker and, and doing that. My brother, however, the passion that some of these kids have, instead of, for sports, and put it into arts programs that are available for them, turn into life-changing experiences. Where am I? I, I work day in, day out, and doing something I didn't know that I'd ever do when I was a kid. My brother is living his dream, literally living his dream. Last week, he has performed in front of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people. He was scheduling Carnegie Hall in New York last week for his choir and his orchestra. And I, I just look at his experience and think, are we missing that in our arts programs? Are we missing those kids that maybe if we gave them a better avenue, a better shot at, at honing their skills, at moving up, that, that they could, they could do it for a passion? He's going to be a doctor in that field, and, and he's taken it to the nth degree, and I think we are, I think we do miss on, on some of that stuff. This proposal would give that many more opportunities, I promise you, it would give that many more opportunities to our young kids to learn, to grow, and, and maybe become something like, like that in the future that would reward, that would reward us all. I've talked with other cities about it, I've talked with our counterparts, but I've also talked about the residents. The residents, if they know they have this tax, they certainly don't feel it. They do, however, feel the results of it. They feel it. They feel, Councilman Gordon and I made a dumb little video one afternoon, and to see the joy on some faces of some kids in an all-abilities park, we, our hashtag was the "two cents, Gordo, was it worth your two cents?" And after that, we, we certainly found out it was, for the kids that, that could get in specialized equipment and, and play in an all-abilities park. A host of other things that we know it could, it could go to, but even today, talking to the folks at Intermountain Healthcare at that meeting that I alluded to earlier, they, these are medical professionals, so these aren't politicians, these aren't city people, these are outside health professionals that are now prescribing patients to walk. They're saying, you've got to walk more, you've got to get physically healthier, you've got to get mentally healthier, you've got to get socially healthier, and they're prescribing that to them often. A program like this is making those offerings that much more available, and will, will, will incrementally improve the, the health, the social, physical, and mental health of our community, and that's why I would encourage all of us to study it and, and vote for it. I think it'll change our community for the better.
Thank you, Elson Mendenhall, I think he summed it up for all of us.
Agreed.
And so, we appreciate that. So, thank you for participating in this, both sides, and that's what this government's all about, and this is the process we have here. Now it's your opportunity to, to go to the polls and vote, whichever way you'd like to vote, so. Okay, let's move on. Okay, let's move on. Resolution eighteen dash fifteen, establishing the formula for the amount of water to be transferred to the city upon development.
This, this resolution has just two changes. One is, Spanish Fork City has a lot of drinking water rights. The state limits us to about forty years' worth of growth of water. After that, we can't exact water anymore, and we were right there at the threshold, and so currently, we don't exact water for indoor use for residents that are, for housing that comes into the city. We may end up entertaining opportunities to have businesses that use a lot of water come into the city, at which case that reservoir could dry up quickly. And so, what this, this ord, this resolution does is it says, for residents and for businesses with a connection that's the same size as a residence, we, we don't exact water, but for businesses that require a large amount of water, then, then we would exact the amount of water that is anticipated that they would use. So that's the first change. The second change is, we, we no longer allow residents to, for their outdoor water, or housing, or residential development, we don't allow them to pay money, they have to bring actual water rights now. As, as our amount of water right has been used up a little bit, we're now to the point where, the last time we passed one of these resolutions, we, we took away the option for them to just reimburse us for water that, that we already owned. And so, with that, they have to go and acquire water rights. Usually, a developer will get water rights with their land, and they can use those water rights to dedicate to the city. But there are instances where in a small business, or even a large business with only a restroom, doesn't need a lot of water to run that business, or a flag lot, or a vacant lot, where a single person is, is trying to build a home, needs to come to the city with, with, with a small amount of water, maybe even half of a share of water, or something like that. In those instances, I feel like we do a disservice to them, making them to go out on the market and try to find such a small amount of water, where they'll likely be, you know, could be taken advantage of and charged a lot more than that water really should be charged for. And so, this, this resolution also says, if, if your water exaction is for three acre-feet of water or less, then you can reimburse the city for water that we've already purchased, but at the going-market rate for water at the time. And so, it, it allows these individuals to, to not waste months and months trying to find water. So, those are the two changes.
Any questions, comments? See, now I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution eighteen dash fifteen, establishing the formula for the amount of water to be transferred to the city upon development.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
That passes. Resolution eighteen sixteen, creating a new section in public works policy concerning an alternative to low-impact development, LID stormwater requirements when LID is not feasible.
Okay, so our state permit requires us to require development to apply low-impact development principles, which is, the concept is, they want the development to have the same impact on the environment after it's done as it did before. So if there was a certain amount of runoff that was leaving a site going into our waters, or, or rivers, and creeks, and, and lakes, then they wanted to match that. And to do that, they came up with some rules about what kind of rainstorm would have to be retained on-site, and, and just some basic LID principles that needed to be followed. It then says, if it is not feasible to do low-impact development, then a solution had to be proposed. And that's pretty much all it said, and, and so, we, we went to a public works conference two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, and, and basically what that, at that conference, they had a lot of discussion about this issue, and the state weighed in on it quite a bit. And we actually sat next to some of the staff for the state office that, that will go in and audit cities for whether they follow these permits or not. Several cities that have been a little bit more relaxed about this permit have had six-figure fines because of that. One of the things that Spanish Fork City has been recognized by the state is being really leaders in low-impact development, and, and how it can be applied in a practical manner. It seems like, as I've looked around, there's a lot of impractical ways to apply it, and, and that's why there's been so many problems, but it seems like we have a very good, practical way to do low-impact development. That being said, it's fairly vague to say to a developer, well, this area doesn't work for low-impact development, propose something, and it's very hard for the engineering office to enforce that type of verbiage. And so, some cities have said, well, if it's not really feasible, we're just not going to require it. And our stormwater staff that was sitting next to the state when that was mentioned, their conversation with the state was, that was not going to fly, and, and, and the state really didn't approve of that. Then they mentioned a study that we had just finished, which basically said, well, if low-impact development does, cannot be accomplished in this area, because you have a high-water table, or you have tight claves, or something like that, then let's not require it, let's make sure the storm drain system is in place that will work and not flood people out, but let's take the difference between that site and one that it would work, that difference in cost that the developers basically saving because they don't have to install LID, let's take that difference, and let's put it towards developing and beautifying parts of the city where it will work well. So for instance, at Sierra Park, that we've talked about, across the street to the north, there's what's called a double-frontage lot area, where all the houses' front yards are on a different street, so you just have the backyards and fences, and you have the sidewalk, you have a weed patch where the planter is, because no one cares about that, that planter, it's not in front of anyone's house, and they have the curb and gutter and the road. What we would do, LID would work wonderfully in that area, and so what we would do is we'd take money from an area, maybe down in the Canyon Creek area, where the water table is really high and it doesn't work, we'd take what those developers over there would save, and not having to do LID, and we put it towards installing LID and beautifying those double-frontage lot planters, and having a much better effect than if we would have applied the LID in, in those instances. We, we, we went over this with the state and got two thumbs up. They said that this is the, the, the way it should be done, and, and so this ordinance accommodates that. We felt like we could require this based upon our current ordinances and permits, but it was very vague. You need to propose an alternative. Well, this is a good alternative, it's based on a study, an engineering study that was done, that calculated the savings, you know, so that, that every site, when it developed, would have to pay the same amount of money, it's just the money you saved could go elsewhere, where it would be put to good use, and, and in an LID environment that would work. So, this just clarifies it for everyone, so that you can really know what the rules are of the game when, when you develop. And so, we feel like this is a, a good ordinance, we feel like it will make us less light-exposed in an audit, and we think it's, it's, it's really fair, and it doesn't increase costs to developers, because if you're in an LID area, you're paying the same than if you're in a not-LID area, and so it evens the playing field that way.
Great. Any questions?
Just to be clear, if I am developing in an area that doesn't require LID, how do you, how are you equating how much money, and would it be, as if I had to put in LID, that's the amount of money that I'm just going to pay as an impact, and you decide where else to use it in the city? Is that...
Correct. So, we did a similar project like this over on Volunteer Drive. On your way to the ballparks, you, you can, that used to be a horrible weed patch there because of the double-frontage lots. We dug it out, put the LID in, put the, the rocks and the trees back in, it looks a, a lot nicer, and it, it takes a lot of stormwater that normally would have just gone straight to the river. So, this money would reimburse for that project, free up money that would go to like a Sierra Park project, and, and, but it would have to be an LID project. There's an LID project being discussed at the cemetery, this money could go and pay for the cemetery project. And, and basically, the amount of water that if they were in good soils, that would have been taken out of going to polluting the river, that same amount of water was taken out somewhere else, and, and that's how we can say to the state that we are applying LID everywhere. It, it never gives you in the permit a free pass of you don't have to do LID, it says you will do LID, if the soils or, or water table don't allow it, you will propose an alternative. And we're just saying, this is what the alternative is.
Okay, that helps me, that helps me with fairness of different situations, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution eighteen sixteen, creating a new section in the Public Works Policies concerning an alternative to low-impact development, LID stormwater requirements when LID is not feasible.
Second.
This is, got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Resolution eighteen dash seventeen, amending the Spanish Fork City Employment Personnel Policy Concerning Mills and Vehicles.
This is that, that sticker on your vehicle, Mayor?
Yeah.
So, we, we're proposing that we amend the Personnel Policy Manual to include information on mills, when it's permitted to purchase those. There are times where it's in the best interest of the city to purchase mills for employees, and this clarifies when that is, and, and gives some more direction on that. And then the other part about city vehicles is, we've, we were proposing that we prohibit employees from putting any type of adhesive or sticker, bumper sticker...
University of Utah.
On, on a city vehicle.
Or like.
Yeah, and the, the hope is to, to, to maintain that positive perception that the city has, so.
Yeah, we, we've had, not only that, we had some other stickers on there that probably shouldn't have been on there as a city, so, that's a good policy.
Okay.
Good policy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion on this.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution eighteen dash seventeen, amending the Spanish Fork City Employee Personnel Policy Concerning Mills and Vehicles.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Mendenhall. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
That is approved. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Request for conveyance of Spanish Fork City SVP water in SFS Pipeline.
Okay, this is just to get your approval of the mayor writing, or signing a letter that was well-written. Basically, this letter is a request to the Bureau of Reclamation that we be allowed to use our strawberry water now through the pipeline, that they just connected through the gravel pit, across US six, down past the golf course, and is connected to the pipeline that goes up to our reservoir. This water is under pressure that could gravity-feed our reservoir, which is really a neat concept. Save a lot of money on power, it would allow us to not have to build a second pumping station down at the golf course, which we were on the threshold of needing to build. Now, there, this pipeline, called the ULS Pipeline, or the Utah Lake System Pipeline, is to deliver two types of water, as far as cities are concerned. One is the South Utah Valley Municipal Water Systems have a group where they made a contract to deliver thirty thousand acre-feet of water through this pipeline. Spanish Fork's about a third of that contract, so we have about eight to nine thousand acre-feet of water that, that is ours, that can be delivered in that pipeline. We can call for this water anytime we want, and it is wonderful water, it's always there, it's guaranteed water every year. It's really a great water right to have in the future as a city grows. The problem with the water is the annual maintenance, because it's with the Bureau and, and Central Utah, we have to pay an annual maintenance to them, which for our portion would equal about two-point-one million dollars a year. It's a lot of money, so we don't really want to call for that water prematurely, because as soon as we call for that water, then the two-million-dollar payments start being required every year for the maintenance of that pipeline. Now, as we get bigger, this will be a lifeline for us, this will be a wonderful thing, and that two-million dollars will seem cheap, but right now, it's expensive. That being said, the, this pipeline was oversized so that our strawberry water that we already own, it's not project water, it's just strawberry reservoir water that we own, we own about thirty-five-hundred acre-feet of this water, could be delivered through the pipeline now. And so what we're requesting is that they allow us to take that thirty-five-hundred acre-feet of water through the pipeline until the project waters requested. Our feeling is, really, the project water shouldn't be requested until the pipeline's built all the way down through all the Submaa properties as a conglomerate of Submaa, or the South Utah Valley Municipal Water Systems. And so, we feel like that shouldn't happen, but we would like to utilize a pipeline rather than just let it sit empty, especially when it would be such a benefit for us in saving power and, and other things. There's a little bit of, of resistance to, to activate that line, just for our thirty-five-hundred acre-feet, but hopefully this letter will get some results and, and, and they would do that.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve the mayor to sign a document concerning, request for conveyance of Spanish Fork City Strawberry Valley Project water in SFS Pipeline. Did I get that right? Got a motion by Councilman Argal?
Second.
Second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. That passes. Eleven fifty East Center Street Expansion Project.
Okay, so this project, uh, is, uh, a combination of three projects. This is US six right here. Here's Center Street. Uh, you have the Diamond Fork, uh, Junior High right here. And, uh, we have a, a grant through the Mountain Line Association of Governments to widen Center Street to five lanes to this point. It's already five lanes from here going west. Uh, we just have a little bottleneck here and it was causing a lot of traffic problems that we've, we've helped with the light, but really we need to add the extra lanes in here, uh, to, to ease that off. Especially since, uh, very, very soon, in the next ten years, it's projected, we should have an interchange at Center Street. And, and this would become a, a much more attractive thoroughfare for a lot of individuals, uh, wanting to get to I fifteen. So, that being said, uh, this project is funded and is moving forward, uh, very well. One of the, the plans that the school district has is to convert this junior high into a middle school, which would decrease the age of children going there. And with that is the concern about Highway six, it's a very dangerous road to be crossing if you live up in the Sunny Ridge area in the northeast, uh, part of the city. And so, uh, we a- approached the Mountain Line Association of Governments about constructing a ramp and then a undercrossing under US six, uh, to come out here just north of the gas station and then run over to the junior high. Now, a lot of people might look at this and say, well, we don't, we don't know if we want a tunnel. Uh, tunnels are, are not safe is, is, is kind of the general, uh, worry about tunnels. Uh, it's important to note that US six is, is really elevated here. And, and the tunnel, if you will, the pedestrian crossing would have daylight on both sides. So, it would have more of the appearance of a bridge than a tunnel because you, you would basically be able to see daylight on either side. You wouldn't be going deep into the ground under and then coming deep out of the ground. Uh, that being said, it would be lighted and, uh, a lot safer than crossing Highway six. Highway six is a very dangerous, fast-moving road. So, this project, uh, was, uh, uh, voted on, uh, for all of Utah County and, and it wa- it, it was ranked very high i- i- in need and was funded as well. And so, because of its proximity to this project, the proposal is to combine the two projects into one project and build them at the same time. As the traffic engineers, uh, that started working on this design, uh, they noticed something about this new lighted intersection. And that was a, a road that's right here that goes into South Gate Townhomes, uh, as well as a, uh, a parking lot access that goes right here into the school's parking lot. These two accesses are so close to the signal that eventually they will fail. And immediately, when we have the five lanes, they will not function well and, and are actually create an offset situation that is, is considered dangerous in the traffic engineering world. So, with that, uh, uh, the suggestion was made, uh, of maybe combining, eliminating those two, two accesses and, and aligning them with eleven fifty east. So, this becomes a four-way lighted intersection, which would then provide both a access into, uh, an enlarged parking lot here. One of the complaints we've heard quite often is that this parking lot is too small and is poorly designed. It's, it's not very efficient for parking. You, you have cars parked all over the place in it. So, enlarging this parking lot to provide access there and then access into this development. That is not free to build this.
Come on. What? What would it pay you for?
Yeah, so, so at any rate, we wanted to approach this methodically and we've kind of updated, uh, uh, you about that approach. If these two houses weren't willing to sell, it's, it's useless to even proceed. So, we first went to these two houses and, and didn't promise to buy, but said, if, if we wanted to buy, would you be willing to sell? And both of them agreed and said, yes, we would be willing to sell. We then approached the school district and, and asked them about the concept. They were very supportive of it. Felt like it was a, a good concept. So, then we went to this, uh, townhome development and we discussed, uh, with them what, uh, it would mean to have this here. And, 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 you know, most people are afraid of change and this is a big change for them. And we kind of talked about how, you know, eventually this could fail. If this fails, we would have to put an island here, uh, so that we don't have a dangerous left turn here. Now, that's well into the future when we have an interchange at Center Street at I fifteen. But, but this is bad now. It's dangerous now, but it could fail. And then they would be forced to come all the way around here if they wanted to go on Highway six. That to us would be a, a very, uh, poor answer. So, we, we kind of explained that to them. We, we mentioned the need to purchase some land for the trail here. And then we mentioned that we would need to buy some land for the road here. And, and we also talked about the city's current policies for taking over private roads, which basically is if you can bring it up to a good condition, if you can make sure that any parking stalls are, are paved with concrete, not asphalt that come off of the road, uh, then it's been our policy to, to be willing to take them over. Uh, we then can count it as our road system. We receive gas tax for it. And usually, we do a lot better with these roads than we do these big wide roads. Cause, uh, you get the same amount of money for a road like this as you do for a road like that. And, and, and the cost for pavement maintenance is linear. Uh, it's, it's per square foot. It's not per length, per, uh, uh, centerline road. So, you, you don't have, the, this cost is half this cost because it's half the size of the road. You, you don't have, uh, pretty much the same cost no matter how wide the, the road is. So, that being said, one of the things that we mentioned to them is, is they have a huge need to, uh, uh, update their roads. They're in really poor condition. Uh, they're especially in really poor condition in, uh, their parking areas. And so we mentioned to them, if, if, if we were to buy the land that we need here at appraised value, uh, it likely would pay the cost to update this to a point where we could take over those roads and the maintenance. And then we could start getting the gas tax for that and maintaining it for them. I personally feel like, uh, as far as the residents go, we do a disservice to them if we allow a developer to build substandard roads and then heap the maintenance of those substandard roads on residents that are paying the same gas tax as everyone else. And so, that's where our policy has come from. Uh, they're debating that. But, they have not said no. They're debating it. We don't know. If they say no, this issue probably goes away. I, I can't imagine us forcing this on any development. I've told them all along, the only reason why we're proposing it is we feel like it is the best thing for your neighborhood and the best thing for the school. But if you don't want it, I, I don't think there's anyone with an appetite to forcing it on anyone. So, they're considering it. We're, we're getting some positive feedback. Uh, there are a couple of residents that maybe are right here in this area that are, are really concerned about it. We'll see how it plays out in their, in their meetings. But there is a cost that, uh, we wanted to discuss with the city council to see if that cost is something that you, uh, are comfortable with or not. The, the total cost to do this is about one point eight million dollars. That would add all of this. Now, with the widening of the parking lot and the land acquisition there and the new entrance and all that, it, it would be our recommendation to go to the city council, uh, to, to go to the school district for about two hundred thousand of that, uh, of, of that money. Uh, we, we talked to MAG about this. MAG liked the project, but they, they did point out this road right here, if you will, it has little regional significance, except for the fact it gets rid of two bad accesses here. And so, they, uh, mentioned that they think, they don't know, because it has to go to a vote, but they think that likely the Mountain Line Association of Governments would agree to pay for half of that one point eight. So, our feeling is if the city council is, uh, feeling like this is worth pursuing, uh, knowing that the cost would be about seven hundred thousand dollars. If the school district gives two hundred thousand, uh, then, then we'll proceed. Otherwise, uh, maybe we should back off even before we hear a final, uh, you know, vote from South Gate. I'd hate to have them vote and then say no. Although, we have, we have told them all along, it depends on, on Mountain Line Association of Governments and the city council budgeting for it. And, and, and we don't know that that will happen. We, we feel like, uh, there's a lot of support for it, but we don't know what the budgets will allow and what happens. And they, they understand that. Uh, so, with that in mind, is this whole change worth seven hundred thousand? It's something that we'd like you to think about. The other thing that we'd like you to think about is, um, these projects, when we got the original funding for them, that was like six years ago. So, as you can imagine, they've gone up in, in our estimates. We, we fine tune our estimates every year and the estimates have gone up. So, I think it's important for you to understand that originally, the Mountain Line Association of Governments for the Center Street widening project budget of four point one million dollars, okay? Our city match for that is six point seven seven percent or two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, our updated estimate is five point two six million dollars. So, that has gone up, uh, which also requires our match to go up, uh, seventy-eight thousand dollars up to three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So, if, just so you know, we are now probably gonna have to pay an extra seventy-eight thousand dollars for this widening. And pro- pro- we're, we are estimating about sixty-three thousand dollars more for the tunnel. So, uh, that is what it is. We, we don't budget for this until twenty twenty, so it's hard to say it was in the budget. It's just, we anticipated paying about two hundred and eighty thousand and now we'll be paying three hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, it's.
So, close to one point one million.
That includes the purchase of those two homes?
Yes, yes. So, that would be, that's, that's all-inclusive. It's just, there's different funding sources coming from all directions. Uh, part of, part of our agreement on this, this, uh, pedestrian crossing here is that we would pay five hundred thousand for that over and above our match. So, that's also some city costs. Uh, the school district has said that they will donate the property for the widening as their part of paying towards that. But we would then ask for two hundred thousand dollars more for the parking lot. So, it, it is fairly complicated. But with, what we don't want to do is get down the road too far and then have anyone be surprised with the cost. And so, uh, that's really what, what we want to do. Mostly get some direction. Should we keep going? You wouldn't, you wouldn't vote for this, you know, until budget time came around. But, but are you feeling comfortable with how we're proceeding? Should we, should we keep working with this, the South Gate Village people and see if they are interested? Uh, or if, if there's anyone uncomfortable, we, we're happy to put the brakes on and, and do whatever you would like.
Is this path already there?
No.
That would be built also?
Trail.
Okay, so, yes for me.
Yes for me.
Yep.
Yep.
I guess mine doesn't count. I would have said yes. So, that's okay. Thank you. Okay.
Rocky Mountain Power Corridor Concept.
Rocky Mountain Power.
Rocky Mountain. Hi, you want me to break into song about now?
Please, John. Mr. Denver.
I just sang him all the way to Arizona last week, so. We want to talk about this corridor, which you guys are all very familiar with, the Rocky Mountain Power Corridor. This went in our original Trails Master Plan. Uh, cause it's a, it's a nice major thoroughfare for a trail to go around our city. And I don't remember how many years ago it was, Chris and I went up to Rocky Mountain Power when we had developed this concept and we loved the idea of a linear park and a trail going through here. What better use for a power corridor that you can't build anything under? And, uh, we went up and visited with the powers that be at Rocky Mountain Power. It's been a lot of years ago, seven or eight, maybe ten. And they, I don't tell you what they said, but no.
Laughed you out of the room.
So, things have changed over the last seven or eight years. And, uh, we had, uh, Dave Anderson, when Logan Simpson was working on, uh, the River Bottoms, approached him, uh, about putting together a concept plan, for a Greenway, Spanish Fork Greenway Corridor going through this area. And we've, we've touched base with, uh, Rocky Mountain Power again. And they've had some changes in their organization as well and, uh, things are a little more positive. Uh, we love the concept and idea of some linear parks. Uh, just for point of reference, and this runs, uh, our original trail plan had it going from clear here to the gravel pit, you know, up and circling back around, but, uh, I think that's up close to where the railroad tracks are now. Uh, I appreciate, Dave Anderson's been doing a lot of work on this. We had a, uh, a committee that was, they put together through the city and had, uh, this Logan Simpson group come and spend several hours, uh, working on a concept plan. So, uh, I'm gonna have, uh, Dave come and talk to you about this concept plan. Uh, there's some really neat ideas in here. Again, there, there are things that have opened our eyes that we didn't even have any idea about. Uh, we're not locked into any of these, obviously. It is con- conceptual. But, uh, some neat ideas about this corridor and what we can do with it now that Rocky Mountain Power at least is open to discussion, right? So, Dave, I'll pass the, I'll be your secretary now.
Awesome. Wonderful. Thank you.
I thought we was gonna go our whole meeting and not hear from you, Dave.
No, you, that, that can't happen.
Wow. That would have been a first.
Three minutes. Is that the goal?
Yep. Let me get my timer out.
Wish me luck.
Yeah, good.
You know, there really are just a couple of things I want to touch on here. Um, and, you know, Dale mentioned this, but to kind of reinforce the concept. At this point, these are really ideas, but we do need a starting point, uh, to have as we start to have serious discussions with Rocky Mountain Power about being able to use their property. Uh, particularly through the Legacy Farms Development. The Power Corridor is owned by Rocky Mountain Power. That's to say, they own the land that the power poles are placed in, that the lines run over and so forth. It's not that way through the whole corridor and some other places Rocky Mountain Power just has easements. In some other places, Rocky Mountain Power just has easements. And to those areas, we would work with them a little bit differently. But obviously, the area that is encompassed by legacy farms really is what we would anticipate starting with. That's what particularly we've talked with Rocky Mountain Power about, again, being able to utilize. And these are ideas, again, as I mentioned, in fact, relative to the ideas, I'll say this as well, these ideas came from us for the most part. Logan Simpson, some of you guys have worked with them on the River Bottoms project, they're definitely idea people. We had a couple of their folks out from Colorado for a couple of days to talk through things that potentially could exist in the power corridor, but really it came mostly just from our staff, the, the different concepts that we'll see here. And Logan Simpson's just tried to illustrate those as best as they can, but if you can maybe flip through these at maybe a two or three second per slide pace, Scott, until we get to slide number five. And this is something that we can put on the city's website as well. My only hesitation in doing that is to maybe build a real strong expectation on the part of residents in the area. I would guess that it'll take 20 years maybe to develop everything that is described in this document, largely with the idea that it's going to happen as the rest of that bench develops. Certainly could happen faster, but may take quite a while. So this, this is the consistent thread that would tie the entire corridor together, trails, right? Every place that a trail gets built, it's a home run. I think Seth really helped plant the seed that this corridor has the potential to truly serve a regional trail connectivity purpose. In Springville, he can go to different areas underneath the power lines where they've built trails and parks and that sort of a thing. It's the same power corridor, runs up through Provo, et cetera, et cetera, ends for us essentially at the mouth of the canyon, right where we're going to have some pretty big trails converging. So this seems to make a lot of sense. And we've got 120 feet and a lot of places to work with. What do you do with 120 feet? You could only plant certain kinds of trees in it. You can't build much by way of permanent structures. Well, again, trails. I think it was either Chris or Jared Johnson that suggested that maybe we have a couple of different paths. And the idea that we have a path that's, that's specifically dedicated, for example, to mountain bikes and that sort of a thing, and you'll see some imagery and on some other pages in the document. I've heard a phrase used, I'm not an expert, but I mean, it's almost the idea of like a slalom kind of a course for mountain bikes, different things that could be constructed by way of obstacles, challenges, things that have become very popular. I recently, just yesterday, learned that high school mountain biking, you know, is a competitive sport in Utah. Utah's been the fastest growing state relative to growth in that sport. I think we're now number two in the nation just for, for competitors at the high school level, on high school teams. And our growth rate, you know, has us eclipsing number one in the near future. And so, I mean, facilities that might cater to, to a particular interest group like that, but also there are communities that, that rely on these types of facilities for just day-to-day transportation. So maybe enough about trails, but that's the one thing that we would anticipate going through the whole corridor you see in the document. Maybe Scott, if you can kind of just go through different sections. So section one. Double check myself here. That, that's kind of indicative of, of a good part of what you would see in the legacy farms development, probably limited improvements through a good part of the corridor. That is to say, you wouldn't necessarily see manicured lawn and that type of thing, but maybe a little bit more natural treatment of the terrain with the trails and occasional, and maybe resting spots, gathering places and things like that. Through the legacy farms project, I think we have just about a mile of trail to, to work with. So that's a big section. Also, in the legacy farms project, a segment of the corridor is abutted by a public street, area that's built today. Some of you guys might've driven on that street. You can look in the corridor. I think the ugliness of the corridor today is really what has helped get this ball rolling. But in a section like that, the corridor might be developed like our typical city park, maybe with some unique things in that particular area. But again, the difference being much less significant improvements in some areas, much more robust improvements in others, and that's kind of the idea through the whole corridor. Focus on specific areas to maybe make heavy investments in, and in other areas, it might just be the trail. Couple of ideas came out of discussions that we had, kind of celebrating the bench's agrarian history, something we, we hear a lot, we talk about a lot. But again, some of the imagery that we'll see on some of the other slides, Scott, if you can maybe go down. So there's different ways maybe to build parks in the corridor, different things that can be done, whether providing spaces for activities like farmers' markets and that sort of a thing. Playground equipment and things like that, that again, pay some kind of homage to agriculture as, and let me just, just describe this a little bit more fully. One to five, the different sections, you can picture this, you're kind of going from the north to the south. Get into four and to five, that's particularly down into the areas where we, we plan for lower density development, plan for bigger lots, different things like that. And Scott, I think we're just about done with, with the last one. So again, the trail would kind of follow that, or sorry, the, the improvements in the corridor would kind of follow that same path for maybe being more urbanized or less as you go from north to south. Just ideas. Our next step would be to approach Rocky Mountain Power with a slightly more refined version of what we have tonight to talk about, so that we could prepare a lease agreement with Rocky Mountain Power that we would bring back to you for approval at some point in the future. I think we'd like to do that before the end of the year. So really tonight, I think we're just looking, Dale, does that sound right? We're looking for a.
Yes.
A blessing on that idea of taking that next step, refining these concepts, understanding that they're certainly still fluid. We just go from there.
Do you know how long that corridor is?
One mile.
I think it's.
Three.
Oh, excuse me. But we would develop about a mile.
The first mile would be, I think, the plan would be legacy farms.
Legacy farm, one mile.
And that particularly, again, that is owned by Rocky Mountain Power, so we need their.
Blessing.
Blessing.
Plus, we need to let them access to their poles and all that stuff.
It's a big deal for them.
Yeah. That would be their big deal.
Am I missing anything, Dale? Did I leave anything? Anything out?
No, I don't think so.
So they're looking for.
I think a mile or two trail would tie in nicely with the local authorities.
They said 20 years. How do we get it faster than 20 years?
That's what Jesse's saying out there.
Yeah, Jesse wants.
So this would qualify for trail grants and stuff like that?
It certainly would. And also, we'd have an opportunity, as we get plans for the trail in place in advance of development, to work with developers to have them potentially build their pieces.
As a part of the Rocky Mountain Power Corridor, there is, there are funds that they receive each month through those who wheel power on those power lines. Actually, Spanish Fork and other UMPA, as well as Payson and, and other UAMs cities, we pay a wheeling fee each month. That wheeling fee is in part reserved for corridor projects like this. So we believe that through some conversations with them, we can also access some of those corridor funds to offset the costs associated with this. Not all of it, but we think there's an opportunity for us to get some of their corridor preservation, it's not corridor preservation, but corridor funds for it as well.
Your mom was going. I like it.
Okay.
So we're looking for a, to proceed vote again. Is everybody okay with it?
Yeah, it's good.
Yep.
Stacy.
Good work.
Okay.
It's just a discussion item, so.
Yep. Just keep discussion with them, to keep going.
Keep discussing.
Keep discussing and keep going and do it.
Discuss it quick and get it built quick, right?
Then I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation land transaction and to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll go into closed session. Thank you for everyone that was here.